Hit the wire and it moves. Yep.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, November 15, 2023. And we will start, as we traditionally do, with a Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Citizens' input. Is there anybody out in our audience or on Zoom that has any questions or anything regarding anything on the agenda for tonight? There being none, we will move forward. Administration, lease of town cell tower.
So, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we had a presentation from a second vendor. And when he finished, we talked about the lease process. And it was at that point that I said, you have the authority given to you by the legislative body, Town Meeting, to buy, sell, and lease town land. It was at that point that Matt added to that by saying, for a year only, without permission of the legislative body. So we had talked about going into non-public session, looking at the pros and cons of the two vendors. And I suggest tonight that we not go there yet because I don't think a cell tower company will make an investment of that magnitude with a year under your signature. We need the longer amount of years, and we have to go to warrant for that. So I think we don't want to have them back in and just hope that another neighboring community doesn't scoop them up in the meantime. But we should secure a 10- to 20-year lease arrangement with the approval of the town, and then we can go forward with the details. That's my recommendation.
Yeah. Sounds like a plan. Highway block grant funds.
Jim, you need to repeat everything you just said.
I don't think I can. Yes. We received correspondence from the DOT addressed to you, Mr. Chairman, indicating that we have a November 2023 actual payment of $29,582.93 as part of the highway block grant. You don't need to accept it. Just making the rest of the board aware of the correspondence that you received.
Right. And the way I read that is they're giving it to us, and it's going towards the taxes for next year, correct?
No, I believe these monies cannot be used for anything other than highway improvement, road improvement.
Oh, no, I know that, but I'm saying as far as what, when we applied the funds that we're receiving, that it's going towards next year, correct?
I believe we already have it. And if Mr. Povero can buy salt and sand and things related to the loan.
No, he can use the funds itself. But if you reread that letter, it says that they were appropriated from the 2024 funds. So we want to make sure that that is duly noted, that it's not going to get put in for tax purposes as proposed for this year, but for next year, so that we don't end up losing that.
The following is a one-time highway payment being made available to your town in state fiscal year 2024.
Correct.
So I think to help you clarify this, the federal, the state government is, the fiscal year runs from July to June, so they are in their fiscal year 2024.
Right now.
Right now.
Oh, because their fiscal year is different than ours?
Correct. So that's, I think, is what they're referring to, that they're sending.
Their fiscal year?
Correct.
So then we would do use it this year, apply it.
Yeah, just the norm for us.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we do that correctly.
Diane Moran?
We're glad you still hang around, Diane. Thank you. Staff reports. So we'll start, I know they're in an order, but it was suggested that we'll take some of the people that already came up, so it should be very quick with them, and we can get them in and out. And why don't we start with Diane, please? Seeing how she was so patient the last meeting.
All right. So I have revised the Cable Committee budget. It's still level funded. I just redistributed funds. And I took into account some information that I received from the bookkeeper on the how many hours cable station manager is working, average hours, and cable operator. And I accounted if you were, if we were to give them a merit raise that the Cable Committee has recommended, that is all taken into account here.
Looks good to me.
Yep, that's exactly what we're looking for, as far as I'm concerned. Guys have any questions?
No.
Okay. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Recreation? Now, you've already set a high bar, so we want to make sure we stay there, okay?
Okay. So our situation, we, for 2023, we're coming out pretty even. We still have some expenses outstanding for trunk or tree. We have a tree lighting coming up. We have a children's movie day in February, and we have to replace some beach sand. But, so we should meet our budget for 2023. Going to 2024, we're requesting an increase of $26,120. The reason being is we would like to fold two warrant articles into the budget. And these are for lifeguard activities. That includes, we're aiming for four lifeguards, and that would be 30 hours a week for each lifeguard at $17 an hour. And, you know, we were unsuccessful last summer of recruiting any lifeguards, but hopefully it'll be different this summer. And the other warrant article is for senior activities. That would be $5,000 added into the budget. So this is for senior barbecue, senior dinners, senior trip. The cost of some of the senior things did go up per person this year, but people seem to still respond to the trips and to the lunches. So we're requesting a total budget of $49,600, which would include those two more articles. One of the things that has increased, advertising, postage, and office supplies. We did spend a little bit more, and I'm sure those costs have gone up, like stamps and things like that. And salary, the salary of $4,000 was set in 2016. And basically, the description was to do minutes, agenda, and file. The position has evolved kind of to event coordination and communications. So that's our request.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks.
Any questions from anybody?
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification. The two warrant articles that appear annually for I don't know how many years that have always passed, it was the Recreation Commission's recommendation that those two warrant articles be eliminated, and the funds contained within each article be rolled into their operating budget for subsequent years.
Yep.
Okay.
And I think, I think we made clear last week, though, that does not make them part of the default.
Correct.
So that's, that's the only risk involved with that, so.
All right. And Transfer Station's not here, so we'll start at the top. Jim, Planning Board, ZBA, and Trustee of the Trust Funds, please.
Okay, I'll take them in that order. Do you want Planning Board or ZBA first?
Planning Board, please.
Okay. Planning Board is requesting an increase of $3,910. That would bring the budget up to $52,660. I gave everybody a sheet explaining where the money goes. There are some minor decreases. There are some major increases. With the additional requests that we, our salary lines reflect the price of the actual work done and what it would cost to hire on somebody or to maintain, that's basically all it's doing, is maintaining. Did see a $1,000 reduction in the legal line. It went from, it was proposed to go from five, from $4,000 to $3,000. That makes up some of the increase in the salary line. Wherever possible, costs for the Planning Board that could be charged to applicants, such as some of the circuit rider fees, as I say, postage, and all sorts of other areas have been shifted to the applicants versus the town. Are there any questions?
So just so the other board members know, because I'm the ex officio and sit on the Planning Board, so last night's meeting, at the end of the meeting, we had a discussion during the meeting about this, when it was presented to all of us. And I brought up the subject about a couple of the different things, about the circuit rider's contract being less, Jim just alluded to some of that. Now, it's more directly, the hourly wages is being better kept track of just for meetings that we actually do have, not every meeting that's listed. And some of the funds are being paid by the people who are applying to come before us. So that's why that's down a little bit, even though we haven't received a bill for the past couple of months, and then we'll have one more to finish off the year. However, like I stated, that I believe some of that could come down on that one. And also, I don't know how you gentlemen feel about the consultant services. It's at 5,000. It's been at 5,000, Jim, for how long?
Probably the past 10 years.
Yeah. And we haven't used that all that much.
Actually, the past three years, that is what paid for the rewriting of multiple chapters of the master plan. This is the first time that we actually didn't use it because this year we received the HOP grant and are working more in the area of groundwater management, stormwater management, and floodplain. And a lot of that is being covered, hopefully, by a DES grant. The housing chapter rewrite is being covered by the HOP grant, which we got, received $40,000 for. And it's, it's going, it's being spent rapidly.
Right. And part of that instills that where we're at with the Planning Board and where we're at redoing the master plan, it's coming together to where that's pretty much close to being done, except for that CIP that needs to be addressed. So that, and then you already came down a little bit on the legal services, but the Planning Board is going to take another look at this and go over it in a little bit more detail. I had conversations with the chairman of the board, so this might change a little bit, just so that, you know.
You haven't used any legal funds this year at all?
That was my question.
So if you didn't, then your really $19,000 is your variance. Says zero in there for legal funds used year-to-date.
We, this year, we have not had to expend any of our legal funds. However, that is, most of you well know, $4,000 doesn't buy you much today.
No, no, I get that. It's just there's an error on the sheet, that's all.
Yep. Basically, that, what'll be 3,000 in the proposed budget is to cover anything where we, where the board has questions that are above and beyond what, referring to a specific application. When stuff comes in for an application that needs town council review, that applicant pays that bill now. Used to be the Planning Board paid it. We can now directly, as soon as the bills come in from council, it gets divided and it gets applied to, against their NIPR account.
But if, if you're looking at column D, row eight, that's a formula in there, right? Because it, because if there is a formula, somebody did something in the spreadsheet because it says zero. So there should be a surplus there. It should say 4,000.
Robin has it highlighted, Jim, if it's easier for you to see it up there.
On the board.
Oh, I apologize. These are, I redid the sheets, which I supplied to your town administrator, and I must have screwed up the, the formula.
That's cool. Just.
So that, that should, right at the moment, that should show a $4,000 variance.
Yep. And then I'm, I always bring, I'm a broken record, but I always bring it up because in accounting, parenthetical means you're, you don't, you don't have the money. But we always have parentheticals for we have the money. So I don't know. That's just my pet peeve of the last nine years, but it's not.
When I redid the sheet for the trustee of the trust fund, I have, there must be a mistake in the formula because it shifted a number into the first column where it should be a zero. That's why you have a lot of sheets tonight.
Cool.
So I do apologize.
No, but I mean, at the end of the day, this is a good news story on this budget.
Yeah.
I do anticipate that number in the year-to-date variance is probably going to end up, if it's presently 19, 209.29, there's probably going to be another 6,000 that's going to come out of there before the end of the year because I have yet to do the office supplies, the postage, which I usually buy in bulk at the end of the year. And I combine the office supplies with the ZBA in order to hopefully get to the point of having, seeing some sort of a savings. The circuit rider contract, we're, we have four months of bills that we're still waiting on. Most of that cannot, to my knowledge, be shifted to applicants, so I'm guessing that that's another, going to be another 4,000. And needless to say, the salary line is already in the red. And that is with, I haven't checked with Payton yet, but I believe there are four more pay periods to this year. So that number is going to be probably closer to 23 than its present 20.
Yep. Great. And Jim did do, like he said, he did adjust it for the, the increase in the pay salary so that he should get more, a little bit closer to what he should be at, not where he's at right now.
Yeah, I could, I actually, I did, I did make a number of calls to people in the southern tier that I know. And even for a part-time person, you would be expecting that the, you'd have to be budgeting to replace me at between 35 and 40,000. Full-time person is going to run you between 60 and 70.
Just so everybody is aware.
However, this is my town.
Yeah, I would, I would slightly amend what you said, Bob, just so everybody in town is aware.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, if something happens to me, you know, the good old bust scenario.
Yeah, because I believe it was in the proposed last year, so.
And by the way, this year, all I've been basically doing is the statutory requirements. There were some really nice ideas for some updates this year, but literally, I believe this has been the most number of applications in the year. And as that number grows, the salary gets expended more rapidly.
So needless to say, there'll be some more shifting to cover the, the pay because there's still a lot of work that's got to be done before the end of the year.
Exactly.
Everybody out there heard that, right? All right. Any other questions? We're good.
No, I would move to accept the Planning Board draft proposed budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget as written.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I will say is I, when I rework these numbers, I'm going to try to keep the increase as close to the present, what you presently see as possible.
All right, let's do the.
Before Jim switches gears, I'm going to make a belated motion to accept the Cable Committee's draft budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I would also do the same for the recreation budget. So could I get a second on that as well?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So all those were unanimous.
Awesome. Awesome.
CBA, please.
ZBA budget is looking at an anticipated increase of $2,489. That is primarily in the salary line. When you combine the ZBA and the Planning Board, you get to approximately what it costs to run the land use boards here in town right at the moment. The ZBA has had fewer applications this year, but not necessarily less complex. I've left everything as is, with the exception of the training, because training has gone up in what the, the cost for the NHMA courses are. And 60, the $60 increase there represents allowing four people to attend the NHMA classes, which I heartily encourage my members to do. And regretfully, the MHN, NHMA has decided to kill their virtual attendance process, and they are only in person now. So the travel will, will cover four individuals traveling, most likely to Concord for one day, and four people taking the course. The other expenses are all listed. Once again, I've got the, I have to stop saying aye. The ZBA has a escrow account that applicants are required to pay into. Therefore, they have the money on hand with the town to cover the costs of four areas, legal, office supplies, other expenses, and postage that used to be the reason that if you looked at the year-to-date variance, this is the first time, I'm glad to say, it's in the black. Up until now, the ZBA has always run a deficit budget. But by shifting things to where it is appropriate, we're still, I believe, we're going to end the year with just over $1,000, considering the fact that in past years, that has been a negative eight to 10. You know, once again, for the, since, actually, since March, when the default budget was voted in, there's not been a lot of extra things done. Files have, you know, files are maintained, but they have not been corrected. Certain things that were planned for this year just did not happen because that would have driven the salary line higher.
Guys got any questions? Matt?
I'm going to move to accept the draft CBA budget for inclusion, inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And the last one you're doing, trustees of the trust fund?
You'll notice that the difference is that there's, there are now four lines to the trustees. I added the line for training. While I spent many years as a trustee, I, when I left the trustees of the trust funds to become one of you guys, during that period, they switched from paper copies of everything, which I actually wish they would go back to. Everything is now done through the portal. You have three trustees at the moment who have had no training in how to use the portal, how to even access the portal. Their NHMA did start last year a class for trustees. That was $65. However, since their other classes have gone from $65 to 90, I'm assuming the same thing's going to happen with their trustee course. And therefore, I put in $300 to cover. Hopefully, all three trustees will be able to attend next year's class. Travel expense, I've been doing most of the things that Mr. Simone used to do about going to the bank and, you know, hitting the post office, what have you. I do that actually when I'm also going to the bank for the Planning Board or the ZBA. So they're not actually getting hit for travel. That travel money, funds are for people to attend training. We do need some office supplies this year. We do need some office supplies this year. Some stamps and what have you.
Salary administration go towards?
That $1,200 is
Stipend.
Was voted by the
It's a stipend.
By the townspeople a couple of years ago to pay each of the trustees $400 a year.
Yep.
That stipend is paid in December.
That was my next question, that's why it's still showing.
That's, that's why, it looks like nothing has been spent so far this year. Like the office supplies, when I get the office supplies for the planning board, then I'll just order them all together.
And then my next one is training, so that's a brand-new line item?
That's a brand-new line item.
So somebody, just to cross the Ts and dot the Is, putting a brand-new line item like this in requires it to be presented to the town, correct? No?
As we talked about last week, we will be presenting it to the town.
Okay, so that, so it'll be good that way?
Yeah.
Right, but it will not.
If it gets approved, then it, all right.
Right. However, it would not be part of the default budget.
Correct.
Right, if the default budget fails, then it comes out. That's what I was trying to make the point of.
However, put it this way, with the hopeful blessing of the Board of Selectmen, between, once we go into the new budget cycle, hopefully, there's enough money between office supplies and travel to cover two people taking the, and simply because I used to be really good at the MS9, MS10, I used to be able to make those, all those numbers lined up, and I was within, you know, when you're talking over $100,000 balance, and my balance was within, you know, six cents, because I couldn't figure out where to put the 1/20th of a penny. Now, because it all has to be typed in through the portal.
So you're saying getting two people so that they're trained on it?
It would be nice to have more than one.
Exactly, we've learned that.
Yes.
With a lot of other departments this year.
Yeah.
All right, it's, anybody got any other questions?
Jim, the travel line may be a little short. If you're going to Concord, it's like 100 miles round trip. So based upon the current rate, you might be a little short if you send in two or three people.
Knowing the people that are on the trustees, I think that they'd be willing to say, okay, yeah, it's a round trip to Concord is probably, I did one last year.
Yeah, but the cost per mile went up this year.
I'm just, I'm trying to mentally remember how, you know, if it turns out that it's three separate vehicles went to Concord because that's when they were able to take the class. I have no problem with looking at my fellow trustees going, okay, all three of us drove, those 100 bucks in the budget. We each get $33.33. And I don't think that anybody is going to sit there and go, no, no, I want my, you know, $37.18. No. I think you have three people of goodwill on the board, and I think that they're.
We get that, Jim, and we understand that, but again, we want these budgets to be realistic to what they should be. Because if it wasn't those people and it was somebody else, then that money should be there to be able to cover that expense. So you might want to take a quick look and see what the mileage is, the new rate, and then tack a little bit more on that.
I would say if you had another $100, too, you should be fine.
Okay. When do you set the new rate? Do you?
The state's already set the new rate, the mileage rate.
Oh, okay.
I forget, I forget off the top of my head what it is, but we've talked about it. It's already set. So I forget, we'd be able to look it up.
I think what you're asking is we accepted it, whatever that was a few months ago.
Okay, because I've been charging, I've been charging the old rate.
I want to say it was something like 67 cents a mile they went up to.
Yeah, that's it.
We use the IRS rate.
That's it.
65 cents a mile.
Okay, that, that actually, to answer Selectmen Simone, when I figured it out, it was at the 65 cent. You know, it was off by pennies.
If you're looking at, what is it, 100 miles, you said, round trip?
No, it's
Joe said that.
Concord, I think it's about 50.
62 miles round trip.
How was it? Couldn't tell you.
That's from his house, though.
Yep, so we'd be looking at a little bit more than $100 for three people.
Right.
So we might want to boost that up to, what, about a buck and a half?
I have no problem with doing that.
Okay. It's like I said, we, and we put it out there, and I talked about it last night, that these budgets, we're trying to get them more to the realistic point, to where we're trimming them down and that everything is covered, and that we're not trying to overly withdraw money from the townspeople when we don't need to be. That's all.
I have no problem with that, it makes perfect sense. I will make that correction and send to Ms. Sparks.
What was that?
We have the mileage from here to Concord. It's 49 miles one way.
That's 50, yeah.
That's not the kind of tolls.
So times, do me a favor, times that by .65.
Five.
Wait a minute.
Yeah?
Roughly $195.
49, 49 times. 65.5?
No. What you had, you had for mileage?
Nine miles.
Yep, times .65.
65.
Now multiply that by three.
So it's
Times three.
5 cents per person for one way.
Times three. 95 and 55 cents.
Right, so that's one way.
Not for all, that's one way for three.
So you have three multiplied that by, by two.
Okay. I will redo those calculations.
Matt?
I'm going to move to accept the trustees of the trust fund draft budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Seconded by Joe, all in favor? Aye. So thank you, Jim, so you can make that correction, and then when you come up the next time, just, you can point that out.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
If two trains depart the station at the same time, one's in.
Hey, there's one subject I did good in, was math. Cable committee, we did fire and rescue, please. Chief, I know you've been chomping at the bit.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Going to have to amend a few things from when this was submitted. You have the PowerPoint with the explanations why some of the lines have gone into the red. And it has the explanations with it why it went into red. Unfortunately, when I did the budget, there was a few things that we didn't know about. One of them is salaries. Salaries were actually in the red, where it shows we're not. And the reason for that is at the time, the paperwork was done, we had a two-week
Lag. Lag.
Thank you. So that didn't show. The four weeks that I was out on medical doesn't show. And starting tomorrow, the next two to three weeks. So the amount I put in has to change. Also, since this was written, we have, it's not in the red in the sheet that you have, which is vehicle repairs. Unfortunately, you can take that, and that's going to be an easy, probably $10,000 off. We just had Engine 1, which is the 99 failed DOT inspection, needs new front tires and had a severe oil leak. It's going Friday morning for its front tires. We also just received, don't quote me, I believe it's around $6,000, $7,000 invoice for Engine 1 for all the brake system that had to be fixed. That doesn't show in this. Lastly, the new Tahoe had a safety recall that needs a chip put in it. Unfortunately, the command box that's in the back of it has to be taken out. So they can put the chip in. So there's a cost to that. We still have the oldest truck that needs its DOT inspection that Ziggy's going to take, Captain Zalinski's going to take tomorrow, so fingers crossed. Hopefully, that passes inspection. So we have to increase the salary line higher than what I presented, the vehicle maintenance line higher than what I presented, and the vehicle repair line higher than what I presented. I've stood up here for years saying we have trucks, the older trucks that should be out of service, that the longer they stay in service, the higher the repair and maintenance costs. Well, we hit it this year. The other thing that was not done, which is approximately $5,000, this is the first year in seven years that the trucks have not had their pump certifications. You're looking at about $5,000 to do that. There's just no money. So with that said, to start, we'd like to amend the salaries. I'll touch on the salaries, I apologize. Like to amend vehicle repairs from the $30,000 that it's been for eons, the $40,000. Vehicle maintenance, it was $12,000, I put $15,000, I'd like to change that to $20,000. And when it comes to the salaries, there's a few other things that have increased. The, oh, I left my sheet, unless you have it up there. Our call volume from January 1st through October 21st of this year has increased, I believe, almost 100 calls. It was on the PowerPoint. Okay? I left my PowerPoint back there, thank you, Jim. Last year, from January 1st to October 21st, it was 467. This year, it's 541. Keep in mind, that does not count all the inspections, all the open burn permits, all the life safety stuff, the whole enchilada. The department's getting busier and busier. The question that I have for the board, because I apologize, I've been out, this is my last day today. And I know the board keeps on saying what is reasonable and what you think you need. The biggest issue that we have is what the members make, that's an issue. Because as of I'm standing here today, we have four members. Two are definite in another department. Two are applying for another department. We have one that went out a few months ago to Manchester, New Hampshire, and we have another one that's looking to join another department. We're losing members. It's twofold. One is pay, and one is the 24-hour shifts. The members, one of the members that left, instead of, he does, he did for about four years now, three days a week in Newton. He can go to that other department and work one day instead of working three days. The other thing is, I know the board decided or voted to do the EMS contract. I have no idea what the board's, sorry, what the board's plans are at the end of that contract. If the board is thinking to have the department take over, that should be included in this year's budget. There should be a number put into that salary line.
That'll go to ballot.
The problem, which is fine, I don't have a problem with it, Dan. The problem is, no is no.
No, not with that. You're looking at it differently. You're looking at it very differently. If you put it to ballot to do 24/7 ambulance, whatever it is, rescue, you're considering that like you can't hire anybody.
Oh, I'm not saying can't hire.
What is no is no then to you then? I guess that's what I'm misunderstanding, why you're so worried about that.
Can I just jump in right here, because this is how I picture it. Ballot article says, open a revolving account for EMS.
Sure.
Okay? We're going to establish an EMS revolving account, we're going to put on what it can be used for, you know all about that stuff. Ballot question right after that is, ask the voters to put a certain amount of money in that revolving fund. You can also put in that revolving fund when you make revenue, right? For transporting.
You have that already.
We have, right, we might have to just change it around, whatever reason. So essentially, what Dan's saying is, if they say no to putting money in the account, they're just saying no to putting money in the account. They're not saying no to providing EMS services.
Correct.
They're just saying no to put that much money in the account.
This is how this side of the fence is looking at it.
Yeah.
One, the contract ends March 1st, 2025.
Yeah.
The warrant article's two weeks after that.
Yeah.
The math doesn't compute.
Oh, we do the contract, that doesn't matter. That doesn't matter. If that fails, it doesn't matter, we do the contract, that doesn't go to the voters.
You're kind of preaching to the choir, right?
Right, like.
All I'm saying is, I stood up here.
Yeah.
Deputy Kane stood up here.
Yeah.
I'm going on 43 and a half years, Kane's 20-something. We stood up here and said, we're losing members. I can tell you this. If the, if the town wants to keep a call department, and Matt, you've been the longest hearing me say, if you have a fire or a medical, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. That's out the window. That's out the window. We have calls now, the middle of the night, nobody's showing. Weekends, nobody's showing. The call department, we're about the only one that doesn't staff one way or another 24/7. How, I don't care, other departments do it full-time, other departments do it permanent part-time, other departments do stipends. However it's done, Newton is the only one that doesn't do it. As I, you and I had the talk back in 2015, I said, my job is to inform the Board of Selectmen. It's the board's job to make the decision. I am telling you, the call department is not working. So I'm telling you, I'm telling you that I understand there's a contract. I'm one of those guys, I was transported twice within eight days, and I can tell you both times, it was not the contract. Okay, my wife did not dial 911, she dialed East Kingston, because Newton didn't have an ambulance. And I was the guy that was transported by Newton when the ambulance blew its motor.
Yeah, I think, I think the good news here is, like I said, you're preaching to the choir. That the town has to tell us what to do next, is what we've been saying.
Yep.
And I think that contract is our insurance policy. And I think what we want to do is not have to renew the contract, but the town will be, all those millions of viewers right now have to listen to what we're saying, listen to what the chief is saying, right? You're laying it out there.
I just.
We're going to put it out there for the people to tell us what they want us to do.
And everywhere I go, chief, and I've talked to any of the townspeople, I have been putting it out there and putting it to them.
This is what I foresee, other than we lose the fire department. The other thing I foresee, March 1st, 2025, the other departments that are planning on already staffing in 2024, we're going to be in an island come March 1st, 2025. That's all I'm going to say. The others are already hiring. The others are already staffing, one of them's a. One of them's a full-time department that's in the agreement. So he's already set. The other three are already staffing 24/7. We're not. So I just want that to be clear, that come March 1st, 2025, we're going to be on an island. Okay? With that said, since we're not going to do it this year, and again, the salaries does not reflect the time passed payroll, I would recommend raise that to $65,000 instead of the $45,000. I asked for $30,000 last year, and that was before the call volume started going crazy.
And the town's just getting bigger.
We have, I believe, opposed seven, I think Jim's here, probably 70-something single-family houses.
And I heard.
That are getting close.
Yep.
How many?
761.
Okay. We got a lot of single-family houses.
Yep.
Okay? And again, it should say something to the residents when the boss calls somebody else to come and save them. Okay? So I just would ask the board to make those amendments to the contract. Not to the contract, wow, I apologize.
The budget.
The budget. I apologize. I got to go prep for tomorrow morning. The brain is, the brain's here but not here. I truly apologize.
No, we get it. Not easy.
Yeah, I think, I think my only thing is this, this is realistic, you know? That's the word we're, we're looking at. I just think once, once we have the actual expenditures to go up against this, then we can accept it into the default. But I, I tend to agree with everything you're saying, you know? It's the realistic approach. But again, it's up to the.
Right.
The people to understand, we're not, I said it last week, right? We're not throwing a dart at a dartboard to arrive at these numbers.
And as you know, Matt, I've been saying it, it's just going to, on maintenance and repairs, it's just going to go up and up and up with the trucks. And I'm not saying get, buy new trucks.
Yeah.
That'd be great. I understand this is Newton.
They don't get younger.
And they, and they don't get less. They don't get less. And they're getting a lot more, as you can see.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more wear and tear.
Yeah.
Yep. No, like we said, chief, I, I've been putting it out there to everybody I've been talking to. Pay attention, look at the meetings, read them. I told people, "Talk to you." I sat in those meetings when we talked about the ambulances. It's, you know, it is what it is. Like Matt said, it's up to the people of the town. And we're putting it out there for them so that when they come to us and say, "Hey," we say, "Hey, we told you, we put it to you in the budget, and you said no."
Nope, that's fine.
And, and there's this.
I appreciate it.
Bears repeating from last week, I said it, is we bear the responsibility of being better salespeople, right? Is if there's a, if there's the after-action review of what happened last year, we could have done better like that. So we have, in the next four months, well, less than that, we have to put together, and you kind of started it here, everybody's doing here with the PowerPoint to start this off, we have to put out that sales pitch. So there's, conversations will continue with that, but, and you've seen some of the other towns are doing that, right? The neighboring towns who are in the same boat like you've described. So we need to have our ducks in a row for that. All in all, not, not that, chief. We're all nodding our heads in agreement, so.
Yep. Nice to have you back.
Again, I said it the last, I mean, I appreciate you guys more than what you guys
We're glad to have you.
Good luck in your next few weeks.
Definitely.
Thank you.
We love you, chief.
I wouldn't go that far, but.
I would. I said it. Put it in the record.
I'm not going to say, so moved. But yeah, we'll wait on the motion for the, when we have the update.
Yep.
Force fire?
Do, 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 do.
Must do is force fire right away.
Yep.
That one's easy. For the forest fire, we're going to level fund it. I forgot, every year I forget it's there, so I use funds out of the fire department to buy hoses and to fix everything on there. But I'll have Captain Zalinski, somebody, probably the deputy's going to have to come in front of them. This paperwork that has to get filled out, I think it goes to the treasurer for the individuals that do the burn permits.
Yep.
To get paid. I think it goes to the treasurer, then it goes to the board. I'll have him work on that tomorrow. Okay? So we're going to level fund the forestry.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Zalinski, let's make sure that gets taken care of, all right? Thank you, Ziggy.
On my desk at 0800.
Oh, yeah.
He's still asleep at 0800. He doesn't get up till 9:00.
Gale Library, please.
Could we do building, Mr. Chairman, so he can get home to his family? Sam?
Sam? Could we do Sam real quick?
You were so close.
I don't, I don't mind. She's all, I appreciate that. I don't mind. You're already underway. Only on ticket. I don't mind.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
My kids.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Kathy Mazer of Gale Library Trustee. And our 2024 budget proposal for the Gale Library, the bottom line is, we're asking for $147,195. I, I do have a budget worksheet and history and even a little slide thing that talks about the main variances from this year's budget to next year's budget. If you look at the worksheet, though, under salaries, I just wanted to say our year-to-date expense is actually as of October 7th, and the rest of the numbers for the operating expenses are as of November 4th, just so you know that. In terms of the main variances, I guess first would be the staff salaries, and our salary number is like 75% of our budget. So it's our largest expense. Our staff are the biggest asset that we have. We have one full-time library director. We have four part-time staff people. None of them work more than 20 hours a week. And one of them actually has worked for the library for over 20 years. Another one has worked for the library for over 40 years. So our library staff knows our library. They know the community, and the community knows them. We're grateful for their service to the library. The, the other main budget variance that we have is we want to establish a line item for a bookkeeping service and transition from trustee bookkeeping to an hourly bookkeeping service. The state law for public libraries says that library trustees are responsible for managing the library budget. For the last 11 years, I have functioned as the trustee, who's also the treasurer and the bookkeeper. It's time for me to phase out. And so we're trying to decide as trustees how to deal with that. And as I'm sure you know, it is difficult to find volunteers. It's especially difficult to find someone to volunteer to be a trustee and a bookkeeper. So we asked our library director to contact other area libraries. What she's done, she's spoken to libraries from six different towns and asked them how they deal with this situation. What they found is most of these libraries use a small bookkeeping service that deals primarily with public libraries in Rockingham County. So, and they gave good recommendations about this person. So we've interviewed the person and we would, and got good recommendations. So we're looking forward to trying to work with this person in next year. We need to look towards the future and ensure that we can get our books done the way libraries do their books. So those are the two main variances that cause the difference in our budget proposal for next year. If you have any questions, I can help try to answer them.
Have you have a bookkeeping service already targeted or a specific one?
What, you mean a particular bookkeeping?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there is one particular service, and actually, those libraries all use the same person.
Oh, they do? Good.
Yeah. And as I said, we've interviewed her, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we're pleased. She uses QuickBooks, which is what we use at the library anyway, so it should be hopefully a fairly seamless transition.
How many hours a week would you be, how many hours a week would she be working, or that person be working?
We're not quite sure. She thinks maybe four hours a week. Well, it would be, so it would be four hours, I'm sorry, every two weeks, that she would come to the library. And she'd have to come when we're closed because we have no privacy, we don't have any extra office space that she could use. So she would be there when the library director is there working on closed hours.
Would this be a contracted service, like a monthly fee?
There is a contract, yes. And as I said, based on her hourly rate, because I think it's like 325 an hour, I'm sorry, 325 a month, so we figured about, is that what it is? I don't remember, but it, it comes out to $4,000 a year to cover her services. And, you know, we'll try it and see how it works, and if we're not satisfied, we try something else. But we need to start somewhere because we need to pay our bills. And we would still ask to use the town bookkeeper to administer the salaries for the library, which is historically what's happened.
Right.
Yep.
So that would stay the same.
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
I'm going to make a motion to accept the draft Gale Library budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Sam.
Sam Zanini, I'm here on behalf of the Building Safety Department. I was supposed to be here last week, but I had a family emergency, so I just wanted to express my appreciation to the board for your patience and your kind words last week. And I just want to thank Jim, Robyn, Tony, and MJ, and Jamie in our office, just for their support last week and all the little things they did to keep the department going. So I really appreciate that. So I'm here to present our 2024 budget, and I included the worksheet in there for you or an explanation. And if you want, I can go line by line, and then we can address each, any increase when we get to it. Does that sound okay?
Sure.
Yep.
Perfect. So dues and subscriptions stayed the same, budgeted for next year. Office supplies stayed the same. Postage, postage increased $90, and I gave you an explanation of why. We're just, we're starting to see a need to take code enforcement action on some different locations and, and possibly some businesses in town, and we're thinking that we're going to be using more postage, certif, mail, certified mail, postage. So we've already seen an increase in that. It just hasn't shown up on the expenditures yet because I haven't put in for reimbursement yet. So there's an increase there. Let's see. Salary code enforcement stayed the same. There's no increase there. Salary, salary administration, which is the permit clerk, the permit clerk's position increased, you'll see an increase there of, it's 72% increase, 72.7% increase. It's not all in salary. As you know, there's an explanation number two. We hired a, a new permit clerk after our last one left, and we hired at 1870 an hour, and we hired up to 16 hours, which was an increase of four hours a week. We feel we need that extra four hours just because of the increased activity in the Building Department Code Enforcement Office. So that, included in that, for that money, we're getting, also getting an additional 208 hours a year of support for, for our office. Also built into that increase is a, is a 6% increase in salary of $112 at the hourly rate for that position. And I just stated a reason, just to offer competitive employment in the municipal sector for a position of this nature, and to reward and retain long-term qualified dedicated employees, and to offer wages that will stay proportionate with increases in cost of living. So that was an increase on that line. Telephone stayed the same. Training stayed the same. And travel, travel increased $131 from zero. And that was, I can give you an explanation on that, too. In 2022, the previous code enforcement officer, there was a, there was mileage paid out for code enforcement when they were on the road. In 2023, I believe there was a change, and there was a vehicle provided, and the mileage went away.
That's correct.
My understanding, yeah, I'm guessing that it came out of the budget at that time.
Yep.
I don't think it's necessary that we have a vehicle out here for the short amount of mileage that we do in town for that, just doesn't make any sense. So I estimated with training in our department for mileage for training and small amount of mileage around town doing code enforcement, I estimated that to be about 200 miles. And I use the IRS rate, as you see on your worksheet, of 65.5 cents per mile, and that's where I came up with $131. So that's basically the budget. If you have any questions, I'll.
Nope. Looks good to me.
No, I think it's a realistic budget for what we do and what we're going to have to do.
You guys got any questions?
No, I'm good. So I would move to accept the draft Building Department budget for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate your time.
And thank you for everything you're doing.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
Trish, my bad. I didn't, didn't see you sitting back. I should have had you up earlier.
At the obstructed view, I don't see that.
Okay. So I was here last, I was going to say last month, last week, and there was a couple of things we were waiting on, so you should have the adjusted budget. I did a summary for you. I did it line for line in, just so that you'd know what each line was for our million-dollar viewers. The first line is advertising. Again, this is for, we advertise events that we might have and legal notices as required by statute. But I think I explained last week that from now on, as of January, we're going to have the entity that is looking to us for, this particularly pertains to scenic road cutting. We will have that applicant pay the advertising fee. However, we're going to keep money in there just in case we want to do some events advertising something else. Number two, a consultant, just in case we do need a consultant. Usually, we get soil scientists and wetland engineers that volunteer their time. So far, we're lucky, but that won't always be the case, I'm sure. Three is the New Hampshire Association of Conservation Commission. That's our dues. It did go down $50 for next year, which is why it went from 300 to 350. That is the difference in my budget on the bottom line. I'll leave this to your infinite wisdom, but I'm thinking that $50, maybe I should maybe I should reallocate somewhere, whether it's in our advertising or maybe for a consultant. But I'll keep going, and you can decide at the end. Office supplies for ink and paper. Postage basically stayed the same. I usually use just my stamps, but whatever. Salary. So this is the big one that shows the deficit. It shows right now that my budget, my payroll is $712.53. However, I haven't submitted a time card yet this year, just so that you know. I will do one. I've estimated it's about $675, as I've stated. So evidently, even though the payroll was completed in December of '22 on time, somehow, you know, end-of-year stuff, it got lost, and it didn't get posted until January of this year. So that's why that's there. So I had to add that to what I will submit at the end of the year. And so our, the budget line is, what did I say it was going to be? $13,8753. It's usually, we don't go over $700 in 2019. Probably the only one here that will remember is Matt. Our budget, our salary line at that time was $1,200. We reduced it. We were, everybody was struggling and saying, see what you can do to help the town. So it went from $1,200 to $700. But I just wanted to explain that item because it looks like I'm getting a lot of money, and we're not. Number seven is stewardship, hidden acres. That's our conservation easement. There has to be money put aside according to our agreement. We do have an account, and it is probably a revolving account. And I have to find out the balance of that. But that is just for hidden acres, can only be used for hidden acres. And we have to keep a minimum of $10,000 in there when we establish that account by statute. L-Chip is the one that monitors it with the Conservation Commission. And that $10,000 is there for legal fees, although that's not going to cover anything legal. But that was their requirement.
Now, by law, right? I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, because I probably am.
No, no.
But with conservation...
Yes.
Said money's towards Congress, conservation.
Yes.
If it's not spent, instead of it going into our fund, it goes into your...
Conservation fund. And that's what we use to buy land with. So we've got somewhere about $205,000 in that account. And that's exactly, I think on the bottom of our budget sheet, it says that. Any balance that's not used, which is why I never used to put in for payroll until the selectmen said, listen, if something ever happens to me, you're going to have a secretary that actually puts in for their payroll. So that's when the committee has been saying, do it, do it, do it.
And then if you needed extra money saved for that stewardship, you would be able to draw it from that fund...
Correct.
To bring the other account up to snuff.
Yes.
Just so all our viewers out there understand how...
Right.
...conservation works and is able to kind of take care of itself.
And typically, conservation, I mean, you know, all of you know who's on it. We've been on it for, most of us, for 25 to 30 years. We volunteer our time. You can see in some of my remarks. We use our own weed whackers, our bush hogs, our own blowers, our backpack blowers that we, whatever we need, it's our equipment that we use. Someday, you know, we may have a committee that wants to buy equipment. You'll see that I've got a line for equipment repairs. That's new, just in case we do start buying things. We also use our own ATVs and snowmobiles for trail maintenance, cutting trees down. We hike in sometimes. Sometimes we use our ATV. We bring our own saws. Our invasive plant work that we do, we actually bag it, and we let it stay bagged on our property until the plants themselves, the invasive plants, have died. And then we transport them, we open them up, we bring them to the transfer station. If it's Japanese knotweed, and we have a truck, which is why we have fuel listed here now, we bring it, can bring it to the Franklin Zoo, and the giraffes will eat it. So we try, we're really creative in what we do, but we volunteer all our time. So you'll see, there's a few things that I added or that we added. And one of them was the fuel and the equipment repairs, just in case. Right now, we use our own stuff. The town doesn't get billed. We don't submit receipts. But hopefully, maybe that will change someday.
We don't have equipment.
Training, stormwater, stormwater management. So we do keep that line item in there. There are times when we have to deal with stormwater management. Sometimes we've done seminars. Sometimes we've just done flyers. So that's why that line item stayed. Trails, I think we covered this last week when Dan asked me some questions. I wanted to add some of the things we did because you were asking about that. We do a lot on Earth Day of cleaning up. And again, our own vehicles, we find, as the transfer station knows, paint, mattresses, all kinds of horrible things on our trails. But that line item is if we need help or if we have to pay someone to use his truck or pay the gas for their truck, that item is there. Training, I think, Jim Doggett brought it up already. It has gone up. Our remote training is less and less. Two of us went to Pembroke this year, actually, a couple of weekends ago. We did all day training, and it was $60 each. Actually, I haven't put in for that yet, and I will. I paid for that. Water quality management, we do that to check country pond for bacteria. We keep that up. We don't need that 500, so you'll notice. We kind of adjusted. We reduced that to 300 and took the other two and put 100 in fuel and 100 in equipment repairs. So that the bottom line is going to be the same, but we just reallocated money. And that's only, of course, if this budget goes through. So the bottom line is we're $50 less than we were last year. So back to my initial question, do you want to take that $50 and put it into one of the line items, whether it's advertising or consultant services? So then I'm level funded at $39.33.
Why? You'd be able to say you've lowered your budget.
I could say that.
I don't, I don't see a need. I mean, I...
I will do, listen.
Trying to be realistic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever you guys want to do. I mean, you can see what, we've been pretty lucky. And again, it's because we volunteer most of our stuff. So I don't have any problem submitting $38.83 if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'll follow your lead.
Quick question about that training.
Oh, sorry.
Has there been, has, has there ever been any concern about maybe, because you do, and you're very good at it, about writing like you do with the road agents?
With the grants.
The grants. Because I know you apply for grants for conservation, too.
Right.
So has there been any kind of training for somebody to, under your wing, to help you start to write some of these?
Somebody could shadow me, certainly.
That's what I mean. And they could possibly get some training somewhere...
Yep.
So that they would help them with the verbiage and how to do all this.
Yep.
Just kind of throwing that out there as a suggestion?
Sure. There's actually somebody on the committee that would probably like to do that on conservation. I'll grab her. Okay.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
But other than that, I'm, I'm good with the budget.
Sounds good.
So on a funny note, on a funny note, and then I know he's waiting. He's worked a long day. I have to tell you, when I'm sitting back there and you're looking down at all your stuff, you look like a duck, because all I see is the orange part of your hat. And it looks like eyes up top. So I just want you to know, you look like a duck.
All right.
Stop it. Okay?
He means it in the most complimentary way possible.
Thank you, Trish.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the draft conservation budget into the overall draft budget.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I had no idea he was here.
Sir, would you like to come up to the mic, please?
But she's like, oh, he's over there. I didn't see anybody in there.
Evening, Board, Pete Gagnon, transfer station.
Hi, Pete.
So we're back at it again. And as you can see, that big old number down there, it's, it's a lot. Went back, redid it. One of the things you guys brought up last time is compactor box rental. Went back over the Mello contract, adjusted that to the actual price it's going to be. Redid a couple of other things, too. Disposal again. I went with your guys' suggestion because, like it was stated earlier, the town's growing. There's more people in there. We're going to keep getting more waste. So a little bit of extra money in that budget line will help if we have to send more dumpsters out. Same with the hauling as well. Equipment purchase, up that a little bit, 500. We're going to need a weed whacker and possibly a new lawn mower. We might be able to get away with the repairs, you know, just repairing it that way. And that's why that is up again as well.
How old are they, Pete?
The newest snow blower is more than 15 years old. It was purchased before I started working there. So it's old, and I don't think we own a weed whacker.
Sell it to them, right?
Yeah. A couple, you know, like drills and whatnot, and which leads me into repair and improvement. Couple of doors, one on the recycling building, the two doors. One of, it's off, so we got to have that. All replaced, some of the window trim, you know, this, just the update stuff that we have to do. Paint, you know? That's why those are going up as well. I also took your suggestion with the hazardous waste day. I added the money to the budget line for that. So it'd be about, it's a total increase of $29,200. Usually allocate $25,000 to $30,000 for hazardous waste day event and leave a little bit extra for oil disposal if we have to get rid of any. See, recycling, we're doing really good right there. Haven't had to increase that. Salaries, I did up in expectation that this budget might actually pass, give everybody a nice raise, and maybe we might be able to hire somebody for some shift work, let people take some days off, have somebody be able to come in and cover them. Not an issue. That's really it for all the big ones. Couple of the little ones, yeah.
And you came down on the site monitoring, I see.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
On the document you all have in front of you, you see that on the salary line, the budget was $107, and expended is called $79,000. The delta there is a result of vacancies.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
It's not because it was overbudgeted.
No, 100%.
Vacancies. But I don't think the folks at home are aware of that. So it's important that they know things like that. Because if they look at this, they're going to think we overbudgeted, when in actuality, we had vacancies.
Yep. We had a couple of guys leave us.
Yeah, I think I'm going to make a motion to accept the proposed, the draft proposed budget for the transfer station as written for inclusion in the overall draft budget.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
And that would be unanimous? I'm having a hard time speaking tonight. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Board. Good evening.
Thank you.
Pete, have a good night.
Thank you. And as a little side note, before we go any further, I meant to mention this before we even started. There's been a lot of phone calls coming into Town Hall about the tax bills not being out yet. That should be coming around shortly due to the amount of comings and going of the people that have worked and taken care of that. We've been kind of doing it ourselves, and it's been a learning experience. So we got a little bit behind on that. However, the last piece of paper was uploaded today. So Mary Jo will be getting that at some point. And as was done today, we will put it on the town website. And if you're on the email list to get updated about any town events and what's taking place, you will get an email letting you know that the tax rate has been set and that the bills will be coming out and when you can expect them. So please, Mary Jo has been getting inundated with phone calls. If you could hold off on those, we'd appreciate it. And like I said, you'll, you'll find out pretty soon when you'll be getting your tax bill. And we appreciate all your help with that. So thank you very much. Next, we are going to approvals, fire requisition 1072 FD.
So I moved to approve requisition number 1072 FD to Belltronics in the amount of $12,136.06 to replace a non-serviceable mobile and portable form, excuse me, mobile and portable from account number 4220303.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that's what the chief was talking about earlier when he was up at the stand, that taken care of.
Yes.
All right, Joe.
I move to approve vendor manifest in the amount of $1,490 with the payday to November 14, 2023. Payment is to KB Partners for Engineering Services at Greenie Park.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. All in favor? Aye. That would be unanimous.
Is that, is that coming out of ARPA funds?
Yes.
So don't we have to put that in the motion?
Yes.
So at the tail end of that, to come from ARPA funds?
Friendly amendment.
I'm an aye.
You guys are good with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Nice catch, Matt. Thank you.
Every now and then, I prove my worth.
All right. With that, action items, the 275th anniversary celebration update.
Just as an update, we had another great meeting today with our group of volunteers. We're moving forward with, on a few fronts with, with planning for events and always still looking for volunteerism or input from, from the citizens. So we'll be, you know, you'll be hearing more from us in the coming weeks and months.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Also, for new items, it's come to my attention and the board's attention about Greenie Park and the ball field and the gates being locked. There is access via the dugouts. However, the board is going to sit and discuss why those gates are locked and whether they should remain locked or they should be unlocked. And we will let you know or put that out for the next meeting.
Next agenda line. I would, I would challenge that to say, why don't we have the rec commission take care of that?
Well, you know what? I understand that. But at the same time, if a resident wants to come and speak on that to us, I would rather that happen by putting it on the agenda. It's not going to take long.
Right. But I mean, the rec commission is in charge of the parks and the parks, we have one park, and recreation areas. So we usually have people come to our meetings to speak to us if they have anything. And we elevate it to the board of selectmen if, if it needs to be.
And that's what I'm getting at. That so we'll announce what's going on with that. We're going to look into it via talking to the rec department, see what their input is and whatever. And then we will be able to tell the people out there what's going on.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at, too.
Yeah, exactly.
So you and I agree?
So we did, but we both went around the other, the other corner.
So with that all said and done, why don't we just have a sign made that there is access to the dugouts if people want to go in there?
Because the purpose of the locks was to prevent vehicular traffic getting onto the fields and playing the grass.
Exactly. And as stewards of our, as stewards of our, of our assets in town, I would hate to see a four-wheeler or a motorcycle or even a car because I found out recently that the gate on the farther end, the whole thing was torn apart. So a car could get in there and raise havoc with those fields that volunteers have spent countless hours and a lot of money putting into really good shape, and we have a good irrigation system there.
So let me, let me ask the... So let me, let me ask the elephant in the room. How many calls have we gotten to the Town Hall about this situation?
One email.
One email, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. One comment on Facebook.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So what happens is if you talk about something on Facebook, every, you could talk about the price of milk and you'll get 89 comments.
Yep.
So I read this same post.
Yep.
It was one comment on, and I believe somewhere down there, the rec commission, whoever, cause you can't tell which rec commission member did it, it wasn't me. But they basically said, you know, you can go around to the dugout and get on there.
Right.
And we did that because of what, what Joe's just talking about.
And on top of that, we just spent good money repairing those fences.
So we just spent 10 minutes discussing something and we're putting it on an agenda item for one comment on Facebook. Um, so, I don't know. I'll just leave it there.
I think we should just leave it as, leave it as it is.
Right, I mean, that's, and this isn't the first time.
Yeah.
You know, nine years.